All right, good evening, welcome to the work session for the Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees. Today is Monday, the 27th of June, our last meeting in the month of June. First item on our agenda, welcome to you, sir, Brandon Jacobs.
Hey, Brandon.
Hey, everybody.
Here to talk about Blink Charging, electric vehicle charging stations.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll set the table for you, Brandon, a bit. As the, the board knows, we're proposing to put two dual-port, level-two charging stations in Memorial Plaza, so on what we'll call the Northern Median. So it'll take four total spaces, so two machines with two ports on each one. We've been talking to two companies, one that's on state contract, and then Blink, which is on Sourcewell. Done some due diligence, talked to some residents here. One, Jonathan Ailes, who was actually the, the head of New York City's electrical fleet. Got some feedback from him, and we're, we're moving towards going with Blink. And Brandon is Vice President of Blink and also a Village resident, so that works out well for us. And right now, what we need to determine, while there's, there's a kind of layers to this, but first and foremost, thinking about whether we want to purchase this equipment outright and pay for the electricity, the equipment itself, or, as Brandon has proposed, and we're working together, this hybrid lease arrangement, which he can go into more detail about. And then the second layer to all of this is talking about the regulations around the EV charging stations, and we can get into that a little bit further as we talk to Brandon. But things like whether or not we want to charge for the actual parking space, which is probably not what we want to do, because ConEd is proposing a rebate, which we would not qualify for if we were to charge for, for parking spaces, but we can get into that detail a little bit more. But Brandon, did you want to kind of go into detail about Blink and the proposed lease arrangement?
Yeah, my pleasure, thank you, Eric. So I have a, I have a presentation that I can share.
Okay.
Can you guys see that?
Yes, we can.
Yep.
Okay, so yeah, this is an overview of Blink, and I'll, and I'll tudge into what I think you guys will care most about. So just quickly about Blink, we are, we have offices in seven countries now, and we have chargers in 18 countries and growing. We just acquired a company called Southern Connect, who was like the same size as us, so we essentially doubled in size overnight. We will now have US manufacturing of our chargers. We are headquartered in Miami, we have a production facility in Tempe, Arizona. I am based in, right here in Pleasantville, so I am uniquely interested in getting these chargers installed. I'm very excited about it as a, as a town resident. Some other companies we've worked with, as you can see in the bottom right, some other municipalities that we are working with throughout the country. Product overview, what we are proposing that the Village installed is this IQ200, right in the middle here. This is a level-two charger. Each plug is capable of outputting up to 80 amps of 2.8 or 2.40 volt power. And it's the fastest level-two charger on the market. So they call them destination chargers, chargers where people are already going to their destination and charging while they're getting a bite to eat, walking around town, whatever it might be. That's where these chargers are fit, and that's what we are proposing. Just a quick look at other chargers that we have in our product portfolio. The top left, the HQ200 is for single-family homes. MQ200 is for multi-family apartment complexes. We have a portable charger for roadside assistance companies. On the right, we have the DC Fast Charging for like highway stops. And then the Vision IQ is like a retail play with an added element of the advertising screen. So I want to dive more on this level-two charger, because that's the one you will be receiving. So what, so Eric and I have been talking about the details with the power specifics. And what we're going to be doing is feeding each one of these dual-port chargers with a 100-amp circuit, which means that if one of the plugs is in use, it'll pull the full 80 amps, which will maximize charging speed. And if they're both in use, it'll split it evenly. So each of those dual ports will have that, that 100-amp circuit. They can be mounted onto a wall or a pole, or we're doing a pedestal and right behind the parking space. So it'll be, it'll be outfitting in between two parking spaces. Payment methods, drivers can pay via the Blink card or the Blink app. And soon, they'll be able to use Apple Pay, Google Wallet, right on the charger. It'll be ready in the next couple of months. And then if they don't have any, they can call a phone number that's listed on the charger and give their credit card over the phone. So the chargers are powered by the Blink network. Some providers out there only sell hardware, some only sell software. We do both the hardware and the software. So we are vertically integrated in that sense. The drivers will use the network to pay for the charge. Blink will collect revenue via the app, via the software, and distribute your share of the revenue via that way. So you'll be able to log out the, the, the network and monitor the chargers, see how many kilowatts are being used, how that converts to CO2 reduction, oil feral save, all the ESG metrics that they need. So it's a, it's a very in-depth network that is aligned with the chargers. All right, so the business models. So we'll skip to this chart. The two that we are considering with the Village is the one, oh, on the left, the host-owned, and then the hybrid-owned, second from the right. So with host-owned, it's straightforward sale, essentially. You buy the chargers, you install them, you can set the price to whatever you want, and you keep 100% of the revenue that the chargers generate. So we're not keeping any of the revenue that is all yours. You own it, you maintain it, it is your property. The hybrid-owned, which it sounds like the Village might be leaning towards, is where Blink will actually maintain ownership of the charger. So we will give you the chargers at no cost, and you pay for the installation, which you already have done. I was telling Eric, you guys have done the hard part already, which is running the power to the sites. That can take months typically, so it's awesome to hear that you have already done that. And so the cost of running power, you've already paid for. So the hybrid-owned, because you've already paid for that, then we would give you up to 40% of the revenue share and reimburse you for the electricity costs. So we are giving the charger for free, and we're maintaining ownership of the hardware. And again, we're giving you 40% of the rev share plus electricity reimbursement. And Blink is fully responsible for all service and maintenance for the life of the charger in that scenario, because our hardware, we are fully responsible for making sure it's up and running at all times. So you won't have to worry about that. And it's typically a seven-year contract, but Eric and I have talked about reducing the length in exchange for a different charging revenue share, so we can discuss that. Any questions on the, the specifics of the two different models that we're considering?
Yep, I, I had one question. If, if someone were to run into the device, run into the machine, and we don't know who it is, you know, and it's, it's damaged, under the hybrid-owned model, what would happen next?
Yeah, if, the one thing that's not covered under the standard of maintenance is vandalism. So if someone came and took a bath to the chargers, then the Village would be on the hook to help with the repairs. But anything outside of that, like any warranty issues, is fully covered by Blink.
So car bumping into it falls into the vandalism category?
Yeah, but we have talked about putting up dollars, but it sounds like it might not be necessary, because we'll be, the way it's situated is you're going to be a few feet back away from the parking spot. And Eric has said a little bit more, but we had the trusty idea of putting dollars up, but we were told it would not be necessary.
So they'd be in the median, you think, Eric?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And Jeff would build up the curb, so.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was going to ask, well, under the ownership structure, if we owned it and paid a maintenance and repair contract, would that type of damage fall under the maintenance and repair?
Yeah, so the way that we describe it is, so they come with a one-year warranty, which covers all parts and labor. And you have the option of buying an extended warranty of a three- or a five-year plan. So that would essentially be the service and maintenance. If there's ever an issue, we would come service it if it's under warranty.
And what do you imagine is the lifespan of these devices, either because they wear out or because the technology changes?
They are designed for 10,000 charging cycles, which will last at least 10 years.
And is it imaginable that the technology will change in some significant way in, in that time period?
So not really, because these were designed to be future-proof in the sense that, so if you look at the National Electrical Code, the most that you're legally allowed to put on a level-two charger, it's called J1772 plug, is 100 amps. And that's what we are doing, we are maxing out that requirement. And it's a bit ahead of its time, because most cars in the road can't accept the full 100 amps. So we're kind of prepping for like the next wave of EVs that are coming online. They'll have these bigger batteries. And because we are an owner-operator of chargers, we are building, we are incentivized to build in future-proofing to our chargers. Whereas if you're just selling hardware, we might be incentivized to build in obsolescence, to sell your new machine in a couple of years. But because we are owners of it, we are on the hook if chargers, the technology gets dated. So we want them to be around as long as possible. And that's why the technology was designed to address both the current need, but also the next wave of EVs that are coming online. So we don't anticipate a newer technology, but if something were to happen and we own the charger, then we may swap that out with a new charger.
Okay.
Could I ask another?
Yeah.
Just a, just a weather-related question. Have, has this device, the particular one that we would be using, has it been around long enough to know how it holds up to extreme weather conditions? Like, you know, a very, a very icy snowy winter with a lot of freeze and melt, or on the contrary, a very hot stretch in the summer? Does that, do, do you know enough about it yet?
Yep, so they're fully outdoor rated. We have these chargers installed in northern Canada and also down in South America. They are designed for, to withstand temperatures of negative 40 degrees per night and positive 140 degrees.
That ought to do it, right?
It can handle all that.
A quick question.
This is David Injimori, board member, who's joined virtually.
Yeah, I apologize to everyone, I'm, I was in DC this morning, I'm flying to Alaska in about eight hours, so I'm just trying virtually. So if we choose the hybrid option, and unlike the purchase option where we determine the price of electricity, do you have a formula, how do we sort of protect our, our villagers in terms of the relationship between the cost and the price of electricity?
Yep, so that would be part of the contract negotiations, is determining what that price is.
Okay.
We have standard rates in New York, but we are open to, to talk about what makes sense. We're, we want to put a number on the chargers that will incentivize as much usage as possible. So we're, we're aligned on that.
And does that price, is that highly variable, or do, is it a fixed price for some period of time?
You know, it's, it's not variable, we set it and don't change it unless there's an explicit reason to do so.
Even in the current?
And it's charged per kilowatt hour, so similar to like per gallon when filling up your car.
Yeah.
So you're paying for the kilowatt hours that you're using.
So how have you managed that in the current environment when electricity rates have spiked?
We haven't seen them spike too much compared to like what you're seeing like with gas prices. So we set our price, and then we will reimburse you for the electricity cost.
Understood.
So you, you'll, you'll send us a bill, I'll request you to send us a bill, and I'll see what you're paying per kilowatt hour. And then I enter that amount into my system and reimburse you for all the kilowatts that I use on my charger. And then set a price higher than that on the charger, and then the, the revenue is dibbied up per the agreement.
Understood.
So I was curious about the cost of equipment, and you had said that we wouldn't qualify for a ConEd grant, but I was wondering, my understanding is that there are grants available through the Department of Environmental Conservation? Is that something that we've explored?
Well, so we, we do qualify for ConEd rebate, so they're going to provide us rebate, 70, with 75% of the cost of running the electricity out to the stations. And we're in line for that if we agree not to charge for the parking spaces. When I say charge, you know, not, not having them pay the meter to, to park there. They pay for the electricity, but not the meter. But yeah, we would be, there are certainly grants out there that could help fund the acquisition of, of the equipment.
And can we establish a time limit on the parking and still qualify? In other words, somebody can't park there for 10 days?
Correct.
Okay.
I haven't been able to look through the details of the grant program, but somebody from our Climate Smart group suggested that it could pay for up to 80% of the equipment.
Yep, certainly. And, and Brandon, how, how much are these units going for?
So the MSRP for each dual-port charger is $7,000. And if you buy via Sourcewell, you get an 18% discount, so I think it's like $5,700.
And so I think of consideration is really not so much the, the cost of the equipment itself, but really the exposure when it comes to the electrical cost, given the environment we're in right now.
I see.
You know, based on
Well, and further than the maintenance issue, right?
Yeah.
Maintenance, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have an attendee who had his hand up in Serbin, Ben. Did you want to say something?
I'm sure he does.
You there, Ben?
I mean, I, yeah, I guess my only, I mean, the, I guess there were the things that I want to touch upon. I mean, Ben Serbin, resident, so thank you for this. But I guess my question just trans, like, I don't see the equipment failing. So I guess that's not my concern, I guess my focus is more on the parking, just changing some of the parking ordinances to allow for longer-term parking, overnight parking, and just changing the, you know, cost structure, where if someone's charging, that they're not, in essence, limited to one hour or two hour. That's really my focus on this.
Well, so at the moment, in Memorial Plaza, we, that side of Memorial Plaza, and we could revisit this about these spots, but it, it's currently permit-only until 10:00 AM. And then anyone can park there essentially as long as they want, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And overnight, anyone is welcome to park there as long as they want, except they can't be there on a Saturday morning because of the farm market.
Right, right, but not, not in this particular part of, of the lot.
So at any rate, I, I think that that's flexible enough, is it not, Ben?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think that's fine. I mean, it's, I mean, I quickly looked up Blink pricing for electricity, and it seemed very high. So I just want to make sure that it's just a percentage. If you guys go hybrid-owned or host-owned, you just figure out what percentage over cost electricity is, just to incentivize the usage of this.
And what would you say about that, Brandon?
All right, yeah, no, what I was saying earlier, we, we are just as incentivized as everyone else is to set a price that will allow the chargers to be used as much as possible. If we set it too high and we're pricing ourselves out of the market, then it will be a good investment for us, and we're investing thousands of dollars in these hardwares, because we know this is the, the location. And if you guys own it, the host-owned model, then you're free to set the price to whatever you want. So it's only if it's the hybrid model where we have to have discussion on what price that needs to be.
And in terms of, we would pass a local law to amend our parking code to allow for extended use of the, of the spaces, or craft in whatever manner we want to, and working with the Village.
So Brandon, with these devices and the average electric car, if someone arrived at this charger relatively short of power, how, how long would they need to be there in order to top off, after which they're blocking space for somebody else?
I would say, on average, around two hours. But they can get up to 60 miles of charge for every hour that they're charging.
So if somebody in an electric car is a commuter, for example?
Yep.
They arrive in the morning, they plug in the car, they're not back until night. They're blocking the thing and won't be using any electricity essentially after, say, two hours, right?
So once they're fully, once the battery's fully charged, then yes, it'll shut off the electricity, and they won't be pulling electricity anymore.
Okay, and so what does that do to your business model if we had people who had the habit of doing that, who were parked at this charger potentially for 10 hours a day, but really only need two hours to charge?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's good and bad. I mean, it's, it's like a high floor, because you're having a consistent person charging every day, or most days. But it's a low ceiling, because you're not turning that charger like you would turn the table at a restaurant. So it's, it's costly doing business, it's okay. So we would encourage them to not do that if, if possible. But we understand with commuters, that's hard to avoid.
Now, now, Brandon, is there the opportunity to implement an occupancy fee for someone who would stay on the, the charger after being fully charged?
There is, so you have the option of charging, it's called an occupancy fee, which is the fee that will kick in after the car is fully charged but still plugged in. So it might be tricky, because with commuters, they're not able to move their cars. But for other instances, what typically happens is they, a driver will be done charging, they'll get a notification on their phone saying, "Charge session is done. You have 30 minutes to move your car, and if you don't move your car in 30 minutes, we'll charge you a dollar every 30 minutes," whatever it might be. So it's, it's a deterrent to have people just sit and use up the charger all day. But we have to be careful with that, because if commuters are using it and they're in the city for 10 hours, they won't be too happy if they're paying those fees every day.
Although am I correct in imagining, you know, our commuters, by definition, are coming from a very short distance?
Yeah.
And so they, they would have decided to charge downtown at this charger as opposed to at home, but that would cost them more money than charging at home, right? The price they pay for electricity at their own house is going to be less than the price they pay here?
Yes, but, so like, I, I live in Pleasantville, I drive an electric car, I charge at home. But what I do is I use a 110 outlet, which is called, it's called a trip charge, which will only give me about four miles for every hour to charge. So if I'm empty, it could take me four or five days to charge it full. So if I, I'll get like 50 miles overnight, or I'll get 50 miles in an hour at the level-two charger. So I'll leave my house with quarter to half tank, and then top off at the charger in town, at the Pleasantville diner, or whatever it might be.
But you wouldn't, if you, if you were a commuter, you wouldn't do that every day, you'd do it infrequently, right? If you wanted
Yeah, if I'm taking the train to
Yeah.
Work every day, then yes, I would need to do it every single day.
Just trying to avoid a situation where, in essence, we give preferential parking to folks with electric cars, and they plug the gizmo in to fulfill the terms of, of the deal, which is you're allowed to park here if you are plugged in, but they don't really need it, right?
So maybe an occupancy fee is a way to combat that. You could set the price whatever you want, you could say a dollar for every two hours that you're plugged in. So you're charging them for the spot that way, but we can play around with that.
Okay.
And we can also adapt it as we go, I mean, as, as habits are changing rapidly.
I guess we have to figure out who are target audiences, too. Like, is it people who are going to visit Pleasantville with their electric car, and we want them to stay here for two hours, or is it just
I mean, Brandon, you're a good example of someone who, who lives here, but who does not have the capacity to fast charge at home.
Correct.
And there must be a lot of people in that situation, right?
Definitely, yep.
Because it costs quite a bit of money. If, I mean, if you're a renter, you may not have the option. If you're a homeowner, it's still quite a bit of money to upgrade, to have the capacity to charge fast, right?
Yeah, I got a quote to install a level-two charger in my house, and they quoted me over $3,000 to do it. So I decided, you know, I'm just going to get a slow charge overnight, and then I'll find all the chargers throughout my day when I need it.
Or only drive the car every five days.
Yeah, exactly.
So right now, we're proposing to put two of these in?
Yeah, with, that, that have four ports.
That have four ports total?
Yeah, so four spaces would be.
And does that correspond with what we had in place in terms of what Jeff installed?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, any other questions? You know, I'm preliminarily, if to dig into a little further based on what Brandon has reported, but it seems like the hybrid-owned option is logical for us. And did you say, Brandon, that you were at least tentatively open to a shorter contract period?
We are, yes.
Okay.
But I mean, I agree, that's why I would think the hybrid one.
All right, comments, questions, anybody else?
No, it sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brandon.
All right, thank you all.
Appreciate it. Glad to think that we're also dealing with a Pleasantville resident in this regard. That wasn't a requirement of the deal, but it's a benefit.
All right, any other questions for me before I sign off?
I think not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thanks all for your time.
Bye now.
Bye.
All right. Next up on our, our agenda is our consultation with Pleasantville for Better Cell Service and Homeland Towers. Michael, you want to set that up?
Sure, so I've been talking over the last several months with Carrie Albom, who's got, represents a Facebook group, Pleasantville for Better Cell Service, which is, I would like to applaud the simplicity of the name of the group. No one, no one has to guess what you're about. And Carrie has brought to my attention Homeland Towers, a, a company that's been, that's worked with many municipalities in Westchester. And so Vincent is here with us tonight to, to talk, but I think Carrie's going to say maybe, maybe one minute of remarks, and then hand it over to Vincent for a little, a bit more.
Well, first of all, I learned a lot about chargers. You guys learn a lot.
If only we can figure out how to use electric cars as a portable cell site.
There you go, that might be an idea.
So Carrie, just to be formal, since you're a resident, can you state your name and address?
Sure, so my name is Carrie, I live at 11 Toyoga Lane here in Pleasantville. And I'm excited to be here, first of all. And I want to thank the mayor and the board and Village Administrator for letting us come in here and talk today. So I represent Pleasantville for Better Cell Service. We have about 200 members, and our mission is to create high-speed, sustainable cell service in Pleasantville for the safety and betterment of the school district, the community, and businesses. So I am excited here to be here today, because I think there's some solutions, local in the community, that can help us get this mission and conquer this goal. So with that, I have Vincent here from Homeland Towers, who's going to discuss some possible solutions.
Thank you, sir, welcome, Vincent. I have those couple of slides, I can share them with the Zoom audience whenever you tell me to.
Thank you, I'd appreciate it, you could put the first one up now if you like. So for the record, my name is Vincent Xavier, and I'm the Regional Manager for Homeland Towers. Homeland Towers is a real estate developer that focuses on telecom infrastructure. More than half of the deals and sites we build are generally on municipal property, most recently including the town of Bedford and the town of Mount Pleasant, although we've worked with others, including the town of Newcastle, and currently working with the County of Putnam as well. There's several others in this area, in Orange, Rockland, Putnam, and Westchester Counties. Really, you know, I'm here tonight, not really to tell you you have a problem, because obviously there's a Facebook group, and just driving around, you can see you have a problem with service. I was hoping to start by trying to explain why you have the problem that you do. As you may know, you really only have one cell tower in town, and it's a flagpole-style tower. And that's at the very bottom southwest portion of your town. And obviously, the town does have a slightly unique shape to it. And trying to provide all coverage from one site is part of the reason you have the problems that you have. The first slide I brought up was really just intended to show the different type of cell sites, because a cell network is not based solely on just large cell towers anymore. Many years ago, when the network was still in its infancy, and there wasn't a lot of actually connected devices, you could just have one tower on top of a mountain and shoot for five miles in every direction. And within that five miles, just throwing a number out there, let's say you have 10,000 devices. Now, within that 5,000 mile, I'm sorry, within that five-mile radius, you may have 100,000 devices. Each carrier puts a certain number of antennas on the towers, and between Each carrier puts a certain number of antennas on the towers, and between the antennas and the base station equipment. They can only handle so much inputs at one time. So, you can no longer just have one site covering a large geographic area. If you look at the slide, there are several different types, generally the big towers are called macro cell sites or macro towers. But, in order to build it through layers, you'll see that you need other ones called small cells, and this could be rooftops. Or smaller towers. Basically, they're just towers that are not positioned at the highest elevation with the highest structure itself. They're more well-positioned sites at a lower height, and that would be what the small cells are. Um, additionally, you have ODAS or Odas, which is short for Outside Distributed Antenna System. And that's what's used, as they showed the example here, for stadiums and things like that, where. It's a small system where it's just pointing inward, and it's only meant to cover a very small geographic area. Then you have Idas on the middle to the right there on the bottom, which is indoor distributed antenna systems. And those are to cover generally large corporate buildings, they're in the hallways, they're small nodes, and they only cover several hundred feet in any direction. And they're only intended to cover in-building. It's a combination of those layers is how a network is made. The issue, like I just said, you have, is that you only have one macro cell site covering the entire area. And what that'll lead to is even if you were outside and you have one or two bars. Um, you may be able to make a phone call, but you're not gonna be able to connect through data. And even your call itself is not gonna be reliable because you're gonna have capacity issues. As I just said, each site can only handle so much at once, and if you're putting all of your community on one site. Even if you have what looks like service, it's not gonna be reliable service, and it's still not gonna work, even though your phone thinks you have good connectivity. So the reason I'm here tonight is to see, or to try to work with you to find a way to develop those additional layers within your community. And, by working with the municipality and this board, to find the way that the community feels is best aesthetically. That will also meet the needs of the community, the users, and the businesses. Uh, if you can go to the next slide for me. So this one looks, you know, very crazy, but I just wanted to bring this up to kinda show you, from a network perspective. When I talk about issues with capacity, what the carriers are looking at here. The red dashed line that goes horizontal to the x-axis is the maximum output that a site can hold. And this is real-world data from another site I'm working on, uh, in northern New York. And it shows the blue, I'm sorry, the purple being lower-band seven hundred megahertz talk connectivity. And the red is more of the LTE, the higher-frequency data connectivity. And this is actual usage showing over a course of a year, the spikes in usage. Spikes can be created from when school is on, when you have a specific event in an area. Anything else that we could call as high-traffic situations. So you'll see that over time, there are spikes, and every time there's a spike over that red line, that's the instance I'm referring to where, yes, it looks like you have coverage. But the signal itself degrades so much that it's not reliable anymore. And that is part of the problem you're having here, because of that one site you have, especially being a flagpole. You only have so many antennas pointing in the direction of your community, which means it gets overloaded faster. And it results in spikes greater than this.
Just to interrupt briefly. Does that mean that? At a given time, when the demand is very low, we have great service, because we're a small place and we have this high tower. The trouble we encounter is too many people trying to use it at once.
Well, yes and no, because it's so poorly positioned in relative to the actual usage in your village. Yes, when there's very low usage and you're very near the tower, you're, you're gonna have great service in that area.
Only a mile across.
Only very close to the tower, yes.
But the whole town is only a mile across, I mean, I'm just. I, 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 I say that kind of anecdotally, which is to say, I think a lot of us have had the same experience of. Really pretty satisfactory service for a long time that has degraded substantially in, in the recent time.
Well, it's not so much just the size of the geographic areas, the terrain and the existing structures in the area. So, because it's not centrally located, it's not gonna cover the whole area. And if you were to look inside that flagpole, there's going to be, you know, it's a pole, and there's three antennas per carrier. They're snugged up against the pole pointing in different directions. So if the carriers have three antennas pointing, there's only really one pointing in the direction of your community here. And that means it has to get through all of these older stone buildings. And I kinda like to relate it to like a flashlight, you know, if you have a flashlight and you, you know, a nice LED one that has a focused beam. If you bring your finger close to the flashlight, you're gonna have a greater shadow, that shadow is poor cell service. If you're further away, that structure's not gonna affect it so much, you're not gonna have as great a shadow. But because of where it is, and all of the fingers that it has to shoot through. You're still going to be suffering from poor signal coverage, even though your community is only a mile wide.
And what about like five G technology and use of original towers? With five G, do you need infrastructure closer to each other?
Well, and that's a great point. The lower Gs are basically lower frequencies, the seven hundred megahertz band. And they are stronger in the sense that they go further, but they have less capacity, they're not good for data. The four G, five Gs are higher frequency, for example, if the lower one is seven hundred, the LTEs are twenty-one hundred and above. They're higher frequency, they provide more capacity, but the signal doesn't travel as far. So as these sites get upgraded, you are gonna see less and less coverage from them. Because the frequencies they're using are, are different now. So, yes, as five G develops, you will need more sites strategically placed in the areas that the additional capacity is needed.
So when you say the five G has greater capacity but travels a shorter distance. Like, wha- what, what are you referring to specifically in terms of capacity, are you talking about number of users or num- uh, amount of?
Both. Yeah, it, it's the number of users, the latency between, you know, when you press a button and when the signal comes back. Which is especially important as we get into the Internet of Things, where everything's gonna be connected, potentially, you know, driverless cars. That latency needs to be very low in order for that type of technology to work. Yeah, and just the speed of the downloads themselves, so it's the users, latency, and the speed of the, the downloads.
And so how, I, I assume the carriers, in an effort to maintain whatever competitive advantage they can create, are. Looking to provide good service in places where there's revenue.
That's part of it, yes. Technically, as, since they have an FCC license to operate in this area, part of that license requires them to provide service to the area within which they are licensed. So.
At some minimum, look.
Yes, so, you're right to say that the carriers are incentivized to make sure they have service in the area where there's more revenue. You know, if there's more users, they wanna ha- make sure they have coverage there, otherwise the users are just gonna go to the other carrier that does. So they are incentivized in that sense, the carriers don't necessarily make money specifically from having antennas there, having a site costs them money.
Right.
Yeah, but yes, they, they are.
AT&amp;T doesn't wanna lose to Verizon because Verizon has better coverage in Pleasantville, New York, I assume.
Yes.
I mean, not that we alone move the market, but.
It, it helps, people really think, oh, there's no point to complaining, it doesn't do anything. I tell people, and right now I'm working with the school board in my town, the town of Cortland, to try to get them to complain more. Because the carriers only have so much funding that they can allocate each year, everyone thinks they're just trillion-dollar businesses or something, they spend it. They're very limited as to what they can spend each year, so they're going to spend it where their users are demanding it. So, you know, having people complain, having groups like this form that actually raise the flag. Will draw them to spend money in your community. Otherwise, they're gonna spend it where, where, where other people are complaining, or where the opportunity exists.
Uh, could I just jump in, it's something that you said, Vincent, uh, in, in one of our other meetings that I, that was new to me, was you said. That they have this FCC license, they're going to, they're going to increase their service anyway in these areas. And if they don't work with municipalities, then they're gonna work with private landowners. And then we would have no control, or very limited control over, over what happens, right? And the es- the aesthetic choices, the location choices, so, and if there, there is some incentive for municipalities to get out in front of it. So that there's more control over the sighting, is that correct?
That's a hundred percent correct, and I would actually refer to you to the town of Bedford, if you wanna reach out to Supervisor Calves, they're going through that right now. In that, and a lot of communities do, for the longest time, they tried to keep cell towers and antennas out. And what that's done is caused the carriers to not work municipalities anymore, to just go directly to private residents, wherever they can get a lease. And then try to push that site, because they do have a right to build out their network under the Telecom Act of nineteen ninety-six. So communities like yours and like northeastern Westchester, they got together with Citiescape to try to develop master plans, is the way to go. And it's not just about control too, obviously, when the municipality gets together, you're, you're deciding where it fits into your community, you're getting the revenue from it. The control also dictates. The height of a site and the, what it looks like is based on the lease itself. Regardless of whatever zoning approv- approvals you get, or any permits you get. The carrier or the real estate developer is going to be limited by what lease entitlements they have. So if the lease entitlements are with the municipality themselves, you're always gonna have that ability to. Determine what the maximum height of this tower is and, and not approve any extensions of, of what the look of it is. So that control is often more important than even the revenue from these types of facilities.
So, for, for example, I, I've, uh, noticed, take the train into the city. You get close to the point at which the train dives into the tunnel, past one hundred and twenty-fifth street. You have buildings that are just packed with cell equipment all around the parapet. Like, packed, dozens of.
Yeah.
So how does that develop, is that, that building essentially rented its parapet to all these carriers?
Exactly, they lease their rooftop, much like they would rent a office within that building. And that may be part of the solution for your, your village, you know, as we look into it more, that may be. You know, this building itself, even though it has antennas on the top, is technically eligible for historic designation. But there's not actually many very tall buildings within the village. And as I was trying to explain with the, uh, the bits of the light show there. You need to have a certain amount of height in order to be up above those immediate interference issues and then get over. So, even a tall building.
Sight, I mean, you can't be behind the parapet, it has to be line of sight?
Yes, yes, it, this technology is all based on line of sight.
Okay.
So it would need to either poke up above the parapet, or sometimes you'll see them mounted to the sides of the building. And they try their best to, I guess, kinda match the side of the building, it never quite looks right. But, um, yes, that, that is another way to potentially do it.
So, in our case, it would be about identifying some relatively high places i- i- in strategic zones.
Yeah, well, as I've begun to look at, at the village here, I don't necessarily think you need high places or high towers. What I'd like to do, and the reason I'm presenting to you tonight, is to introduce myself and say that I want to work with you to perform that analysis. And what I would do then is first look at municipal properties, see where they're strategically located. And have analyses done and plots run to see what kinda coverage you would get from different sites at different heights. But I would imagine that the solution can be found with a series of towers that are about sixty to eighty feet in height. So you're not talking another hundred and fifty-foot tower, lower sites, lower towers, strategically placed, I think would be the best solution.
And which, if we identified those spaces and they were found to be. Both strategically good for the coverage and, and aesthetically acceptable to that zone of the village. Who pays for it, does the carrier come in and say, great, you guys have said you'll let us do one here, we'll build it?
I would pay for it, I would come to you with a lease, and then I would.
Very nice, will you pay?
Yes, absolutely, well, you know, part of this is really working as a partnership, in a sense, it's still landlord-tenant, but it is a partnership, the way we look at it. With the municipality, where I would lease the ground space.
Sharing here, and then we'll see more of you. So when you say you'll pay for it, your company is in the business of building towers and then leasing space up?
Correct, we build, own, manage, and maintain the sites completely.
As compared to an older model where lots of these towers were built and paid for by one carrier, and then they lease pieces to other carriers?
Yeah, they don't do that so much anymore, um, but they're, they could still do that, you know, they're oftentimes they'll do that on.
Capital expense off their balance sheet, or?
Well, that's part of it, they, they don't wanna have that, that capital hit, 'cause like I said, they're limited as to the amount of funds they use. A lot of times Verizon may actually even start an application, and then they'll assign it away before it gets built. For a developer like myself to come in, to then build and own the structure, because these structures. You know, even a small one, is gonna cost at least a half a million dollars to complete. Between the permitting and approvals, the construction of the site and everything else, and that's on the low end.
Sixty-foot tower you were describing is a half a million bucks-ish to build?
I would say at least, yeah, depending on where it is.
I mean, we have quite a bit of equipment at the foot of that tower that we have on Castleland Street. Quite a bit of equipment for each carrier.
Correct.
Is that the case for the shorter units?
It would still be the same, each carrier still needs their own base station equipment, generally, they fit within a ten-by-twenty lease area. In smaller sites, um, there are clever ways to try to reduce that footprint as much as possible. Um, nowadays, the carriers aren't using big shelters that look like really trailers coming in anymore. It's generally either a raised, uh, metal platform or a concrete pad with what looks like refrigerator-type equipment outside. Um, so their footprint has gotten smaller, but each carrier needs their own space.
And so some of these guys also now have backup generators and all that stuff, so. Just, just thinking it out, as we can thi- think about, you know, where, where might it be imaginable to have a sixty-foot tower? If you imagine, what, four carriers on a tower, three, what's?
Well, we design it always for four carriers plus public safety equipment, from a structural perspective.
Okay, so ju- just thinking that out, again, sort of imagining where such a thing could go. That's a sixty-foot tower that cannot be shrouded by trees, right, 'cause that gets in the way?
It would have to be above the, the tree line, especially if they're very close to it.
You've got hypothetically four fenced areas, each ten by twenty feet-ish.
Now, it would be one large fenced area with all of the carriers' space within that.
So that might be forty by twenty-ish, I mean, I'm just.
Yeah.
Very round.
Well, yeah, generally, you know, in an ideal world, if there's plenty of room, I like to lease a sixty-by-sixty lease area, thirty-six hundred square feet.
Yes.
Depending on the areas, though, um, you know, it doesn't have to be a square, we can be creative with the shape and, and limit the carriers.
Obviously, we would welcome your input on this, I, I will say. I think it's a challenge to find sites that would be acceptable to neighborhoods with that level of equipment.
Yeah.
But there probably are a few.
So, yeah. Well, luckily, that's my job.
Yeah, if I, if I could jump in, and conscious of the time, so, we, we, we've talked, um, we, we, we've talked about this matter and thought that tonight wasn't. The right time to present the specifics of sites, because, uh, in their experience, they find that that's all we talk about. And so, you know, because, because then, then you start to think about all the aesthetics and, and, you know, the, the buildings that surround. But, but I will say, from my perspective, Vincent, uh, uh, su- surprised me with, um. E- especially one, but maybe potentially two sites that I definitely had not thought of, and I had been studying the map myself, so. Your expertise was very much appreciated, uh, and I went to one of those sites today and, uh, yeah, I had never even thought about it before.
Well, luckily, that's why I still have a job and I can still support my family, because, you know, that's what I've been doing for fifteen years. The reason I came tonight is really to, to make sure that, you know, not just that you understand that you have an issue, but that there is a potential solution. Because what I'd like to do now is provide, you know, analysis of your community, look at all the properties, and come back to you in the future with a proposal, after working, you know, with the members. To, to come to you with a formal proposal, where we, then we can talk more about the specifics of each site.
So, hypothetically, your analysis might identify publicly-owned land. In which case, you would lease that from us, hypothetically. It might also identify privately-owned land, in which case you would propose such a lease with that landowner.
Correct.
And then, in that circumstance, what level of control does the community have? Let's say XYZ property owner says, great, you can have sixty by sixty and put up a sixty-foot tower, we're all in favor. What, what's the approval process for that? Is that a planning commission, site plan approval, through our planning commission?
Yes, it would, it would have to go through a full.
And what level of influence do they have to say, like it, don't like it, could this be different, all of those things?
Well, you know, when you're on a private property, municipalities are limited by the Telecom Act of ninety-six. In that they can't take certain things into account when making their decisions. The big one being health effects, because the, the, the government's reviewed that, that's the only thing that's really taken out of the consideration. Other than that, you know, you still have setback requirements, you still have all of the other things, if I were to build a house on a private property.
Based on local zoning.
Both, based on your local zoning code, yeah.
Okay. Alright, so, great, sounds like.
Oh, I'm just curious, what's the argument against putting these on taller buildings?
Nothing, that, that, that may be a solution for you.
Just we don't have very many taller buildings.
Yeah, you don't have many taller buildings.
The fact that we don't have that many still means some are, you know, some are gonna be the tallest, right?
One thing that, uh, your colleague Manny told me at a previous meeting was that wood-framed structures cannot support these, and so I said. I asked Eric, I said, these are placentas on Village Hall, those are sixty to eighty feet, no one even thinks about them, right? But, but this, but this, they're slim, right, this building cannot support the weight, right?
Yeah, I wouldn't even, because, you know, especially any kinda pitched roof.
Yeah.
And the fact that, putting aside that this is actually eligible for historic designation. And the fact that, putting aside that this is actually eligible for historic designation, means I still, besides the approval process I would need to go through for site plan approval, I also need to get under the NEPA and then to go through SHPO to get their concurrence that it's not going to have adverse effect on historic property.
Whatever, but I mean, these sixty foot towers, what would help? And again, we probably need to move on and we've taken up, I know for your time, all of interest, be worth sending along so all of us get a look at what is a typical installation of the sort you're talking about looking at, right? How big is the tower? How wide is it? It it's not a slim, tiny um needle of a of a thing, right? It's it's got some dimension to it?
Well, in general, it's really not that much. The tower itself is relatively thin. At the base, you're talking thirty-six to forty inches in diameter. And then it tapers up to maybe twenty-four to twenty-eight inches.
So it's significant, I mean, it's not a needle.
It's not a needle, no. And you know, they can't make them, we can't make them visible yet. The bigger thing is actually the antennas that would then get mounted to the outside of it. And they would have a diameter of up to ten feet, eight to ten feet.
Right, so, you know, it's just the kind of thing that, I mean, of course, this is your life, you've been doing it fifteen years, doesn't go over well with folks who who will see it from their home.
Yeah.
But but as you said in one of our meetings, don't think of the tree on the hutch. When you, because that's a very obsolete aesthetic design and you you showed, your your co- yeah, your company showed different tree models coming out of California or Italy or obelisk models that are coming out of other places that actually look, I mean, look nice even.
My my pet peeve is the uh flagpole that's massively fat relative to the flag.
Right, well, I would definitely discourage anyone from considering flagpoles.
I would too.
The amount of equipment that these carriers need at their rad centers, where their antennas are, i- is great now. That's why that one looks silly now because the number, amount of equipment that had to go into there got increased, so they had to bump it out. But even when you do that, you're still limiting the amount of equipment that can go in there. So that means you have a cell tower that really isn't being maximized to its potential because you're limiting the amount of antennas there. And if you're going to have a cell tower in your community that you're going to see regardless, you might as well make sure it's one that actually does the job.
I agree. Worst thing of all would be to go through the trouble and have the impact, but not the results. All right, that's great. So we will continue this conversation. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Kerry. Thank you, Michael, for pushing this forward and we'll keep the discussion going. Here's the last question as I'm trying to end this, I'm asking another question. If you build this somewhere, are you optimistic that carriers will say, we're on?
Yeah, especially in the village of Pleasantville. Like, I grew up here. Your community needs-
See, that seems to be a requirement.
Well, I know, everybody, you know, it's easier if you go to places near your home, you know, I can get home faster to my kids now.
Do you live here now?
I live in Cortland now. I grew up in Austin.
That could be fixed, right?
Taxes will be cheaper the higher you go in the county. Um, man, I lost my train of thought. What was your question?
Would the carriers say?
Oh, yeah. First of all, I'm not going to build the tower, even if I have a lease with you, full approvals and permits, unless there's a carrier that I have a sublease with that's ready to go. We don't build towers and just, you know, field of dreams it and build it and they will come kind of thing. But I am confident I wouldn't be here spending my time to do this if I didn't think that your community needed and that the carriers would be willing to co-locate.
Okay.
You know, we worked directly with the carriers. I'm having a meeting tomorrow, actually, in Verizon's offices to go through all our site opportunities. You know, I'm going to discuss Pleasantville as well. But I am confident, yes, that this is worth your time.
They know they have a problem too.
Yes, yeah.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Kerry. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
All right, uh, Westchester Power, we're running a little late, but we should do that.
Yes, Nick.
Oh, is that on Zoom?
Nick, I will promote him. Hey, Nick, are you there?
I am here. Hello.
Hey, how are you?
Doing, doing all right. How are you all?
Fine. So give us the update on community choice segregation in this topsy-turvy world.
Yes, um, and I can't see any of you, I'm looking at the post, at the stand that the gentleman was just at, but I will, I don't know if you see me or not, but um, yeah, Westchester Power, you know, um, we were, I think this is now the third time now, three months. We're coming in front of you to talk about an MOU and um, basically we've uh, been been thwarted in the last couple of attempts when we've gone out on the despals uh, and locked in or tried to lock in at a price not to exceed when we go out and do a solicitation or rather for the extension, we were looking to um execute with consolidation with current provider. And uh, due to that market volatility we've been experiencing, actually, we've we've not been able to lock in when we've set those price targets in the last two attempts. Uh, so as a consequence, we're having to pause the program starting in July. Um, and customers are going to switch back to Con Edison in the interim period so we can restart, uh, which we're going to target for the fall. Uh, so to avoid another miss, third go around, uh, we're going to move away from that extension idea and look into the long-term uh, solicitation phase and change the the price not to exceed language actually to a a um lowest responsible bidder language. So we understand the uh, language is more standard municipal sort of procurement language. Um, and and obviously has more flexibility to it than price not to exceed and doesn't pose the risk necessarily of uh, the market running away from a feeling we set that we cannot meet. Uh, though, though, you know, there's, I mean, our luxury aspect to that helps us now either. So, um, you know, just here to talk about that and give you a brief, you know, update on what's been going on, but it's basically, you know, now residents should have gotten a letter in the mail uh, about the pause that's coming here in June, sorry, in July, uh, letting them know basically the general gist of what's going on, what to expect, if they're going back to Con Edison and, you know, how to get in contact with us and find more resources uh, and, you know, stay informed. So, you know, we're we're still excuse me, uh, working through the process now vigorously to uh, visit all of the municipalities and get everybody on board towards new uh, pri- uh, MOU so that we can um, set ourselves up for a fall restart. So, um, in the middle of that process right now.
So is there, is there any fear, Nick, that because of the volatility at the moment in energy markets, bidders will be hedging their bets and and uh, because of the fear of getting burned in a big way over a long-term contract, come back really higher than they potentially need to?
Um, I I don't, you know, necessarily say that. There's certainly going to be, I mean, there, you know, we talked about uncertainty being, I think, in the past, price of the, of the timeframe now and that still exists. So, yeah, anybody who's going out um, for a solicitation, you know, is going to be a little bit conservative because of those unknown factors, you know. Well, really, these these pressures that have pushed the prices up and don't seem to be going in there. So it's really the the, you know, the light of the tunnel situation for some of these, you know, the geopolitical issues of the war in Ukraine and the continually hiking temperatures out there and unseasonable weathers and all of these blackouts and other things, you know, that's potentially training supply or more. So there's a lot of things out there that'll push volatility into markets where they're at now that don't necessarily have an inside play. So, um, yeah, I mean, there's some level of uncertainty with all of that. Um, but again, you know, that's that's just kind of the way of the land, you know, everyone has to get back on it.
So, I mean, I I assume that there is a whole lot less uncertainty in the cost of generating renewable energy, solar, wind, hydro, right? It it's it's just that it all gets pitched into the same pool and everything goes up?
Um, kind of. So, you know, with the way we procure renewable energy for the program is and and the way that we do, you know, within the New York State market is through uh, renewable energy certificates. So, um, those are representative certificates of the renewable generation that we're supplying the program. So that's all underpinned by a general supply that the any supplier who, you know, contracts the program uh, provides, you know, into the grid for our for our contracts. But then, you know, those who are on the hundred percent renewable supply, that energy is being matched through these um, these certificates that are bought on uh, through the NIGAS or the New York State market that tracks all of these. So, all of that requisite uh, renewable generation that we need for the program, those suppliers buy that and that's an added on cost to the base supply. So right now, until we get to the point where there's more renewables online and, you know, increased amount of generation in that, that current starts to change where renewables become more predominant and and cost feels less, though, that's sort of a a premium uh, and additive cost to the way we can get represented for viable renewable energy.
So is there a kind of tipping point that people envision there in terms of when the percentage of renewables will start to impact the overall energy market that way?
Um, you know, it's imminent. I mean, it's going to be not next year or the year after. Um, but, you know, with our state goals through the Climate Act, you know, we're we're talking about substantial amounts of renewable energy representing um, the makeup of the supply in the market uh, in the not-too-distant future. So, um, that's, that that is going to be aggressively changing on a year-to-year basis, but, um, you know, in the current state of things, it's still highly reliant, you know, from a general supply perspective on natural gas, which is the predominant fuel for like this year.
Okay, so um, i- in the in the best of all possible worlds, the program may be back up and running in the fall, later fall.
Yeah, that's that's what we're shooting for. So we we run our solicitation here uh, in the mid part of July. Um, so we're really, you know, in the in the heat of getting all of these, all the municipalities here uh, locked into the MOU. So, um, we're doing a pretty solid job right now, actually, in terms of staying on track for that full solicitation timeframe. So, um, yeah, all things being equal and and uh, hopefully, as we planned, that that should be uh, definitely attainable both for us.
And and is there much cause to be concerned that this upheaval back to Con Ed and then the round of letters about the changeover will generate more opt-outs?
We've not seen that to be the case. Letters, letters have been in mailboxes for most people or have been received by most people over, well over a week ago, close to two weeks. So we had uh, you know, a higher than usual volume of calls and emails, of course, uh, than day-to-day business, but um, nobody, nobody opting out, just that they're across the whole aggregation of the twenty-four municipalities. So some people who, you know, maybe didn't ever realize they were in the program were offended by that, the fact that they were in it without their knowledge. But uh, yeah, mostly it's been pretty positive for people.
Right, I mean, just to be clear for those people who might be listening, without their knowledge means they just didn't pay attention to the mailings they got, so.
Exactly.
Right, I mean, it's not that they weren't informed and given an opportunity to opt out. That that was done and it was done with pretty substantial clarity, so.
Yeah, they they, you know, they would have gotten their letter informing them probably other communications through the municipalities and any groups that are involved in their area.
Yeah, and obviously, there's no guarantee going forward, but for folks who've been in the program from the beginning, uh, especially in this period of volatile energy costs in the last few months, it's been uh, a benefit. In addition, in addition to the bigger picture benefits, the local dollars and cents benefit to someone who's been in the program, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, I think over the life of the program, it's been a modest savings as compared to folks who stayed with the default Con Ed supply.
For our standard supply, it's been a modest savings and then just a negligible tick higher on average for the rate for renewable, which considering, again, that premium and higher cost for renewable that exists, that's not a really-
And further to what we just said a few minutes ago, it's this kind of mechanism that generates increased demand for renewable and thus increased capital investment that ultimately can produce a more stable energy supply and presumably make our energy costs uh, less affected by geopolitical turmoil.
Yeah, and, you know, the long-term view of of what we're trying to do here, of course, is um, you know, bring a lot of that development and generation directly into the county and, you know, you know, as we go along in time, a lot of that direct renewable energy generation is those those um, sites are being volunteered and and we're directly powering more and more of our communities with that green. So, yeah, part of the longer term vision.
All right, so, I mean, folks, folks who want to know more can go to sustainablewestchester.org or or directly to westchesterpower.org. Either one works, right?
Uh, sustainablewestchester.org slash uh, W T for the Westchester Power page.
Yeah, I I just went to westchesterpower.org and it took me to that very page, the Westchester Power page of sustainable. So it's still working that way. All right, any other questions from anybody? All right, thank you, Nick, much appreciated. Here's hoping, there's hoping the world stabilizes. Can you make that happen?
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. All right, so that ends our work session. I will begin our regular session. Uh, good evening, thank you all. We're returning to work session. Uh, we have a couple of items to discuss, one of which is uh, an analysis of the R two A zoning district that we requested from our planning firm, B F J, uh, and then a request from Assembly Memorial Plaza to extend the license agreement. And then we will head to executive session. So I will continue the online Zoom for those who are watching for those next two items and then depart to executive session. Thank you all and look forward to seeing you all again on Monday, July eleventh. Meanwhile, get your tickets to the music festival. All right.
Um, Peter, there was a thing that came up. I don't know if this is a good, should I wait till later in the work session? Um, there was a thing that was raised at the pool over the weekend about the brochure for the camps, for the teen camps in particular. Um, so one of the mom noticed that um, there's a requirement for girls that they're only allowed to wear one-piece bathing suits.
Yeah, David had made mention of that and we're digging into it. I I think that's just, it's been in there since time began.
I figured that it was one of those things that just got left in.
It isn't clear that it has any real reason for being, is that the bottom line?
Yeah, Mike Mike's feedback is it's it's kind of industry standard, but he does not have any rationale or priority to keep it in there.
Okay, because there was a bit of an uproar, so.
Remove that old requirement. Again, I think that's just, it's just a piece of boilerplate that nobody thought to get rid of and we will.
That's what I figured.
All right, great.
Guys, uh, thank you very much. With your permission, uh, I may depart a little bit early here to try to get ready for my flight.
Understood. You're supposed to be on a flight in mere hours.
Thanks for joining us, David.
Good luck on your flight.
Thank you, guys.
And have a great trip.
Thanks, bye.
All right. Okay, Bernie, I I see that you're on there. I know this was a matter of concern to you. Let me make you, there you go, talking permitted if you so choose. So, uh, I hope people have an opportunity to look at the six-page memo that uh, we received from Susan Favate at B F J Planning, essentially uh, exploring the questions that uh, that had been raised by the subdivision of the former Baker property at two forty-five Bedford Road on the corner of Clark Street, uh, where a large property was legally subdivided into three parcels. One, the parcel that includes uh, the old house, uh, which will remain, and then two additional parcels, one on the corner and then one uh, that would front only on Clark Street, both of which adopt acquire by by law the the zoning of the parent lot from which they were cleaved. So that generated quite a bit of concern among uh, folks in that neighborhood about the uh, two-family zoning that was then created on the side street. Former Mayor Bernie Gordon, who I think is on the call now, uh, sent us a memo uh, addressing that same issue and noted, for example, that the Girl Scout building at the corner of Great Oak Lane and Bedford Road uh, presented a similar potential where it could be subdivided and produce uh, potentially uh, one or more two-family lots that front not on Bedford Road but on um, uh, the side street Great Oak Lane. And he suggested, having been involved way back when in the creation of the overlay district and I think that modification of the R two A zone, that the intent at the time had been to provide two-family zoning on the street, on on properties that fronted Bedford Road. Uh, and at the time, it didn't anticipate the circumstance that would arise if a larger property got subdivided. So, uh, we sent that to Susan Favate and Eric Robert Hughes and I had a preliminary conversation with her and I can share my screen for those who might be watching. Let me do that. So obviously, we can't go through this in detail in in this format, but everybody has it and it's also available- has it and it's also available to the public at, as a piece of our agenda. Uh, but essentially, the initial part was that B F J. took a look at what the current requirements are for the R2A district, then took a look at the existing, uh, R2A district which follows the line you see here, uh, and analyzed which ones had the potential, based on their size, uh, to produce a zoning-compliant subdivision. That turned out to be four parcels, numbers 19, 30, 43, and 46. Let me go back to that. Uh, so 46 is the Girl Scout Building. Uh, 19 is the, uh, Baker Property, which has already been subdivided. And I can report, because we have been authorized to say this, that, uh, the owner of the two side parcels that were cleaved off the larger piece, uh, has agreed to create a, to sell the, the second parcel in, the one that doesn't front Bedford Road, uh, with a, uh, a deeded requirement that it be only single-family, even though it's in a two-family zone. Again, that would be unnecessary depending on a change we might make, uh, but that the corner lot, which does front Bedford Road, would remain R2A. So, the other two lots that they identified are both very large properties that are theoretically subdividable, but would only be subdivitable if the, uh, big and I think quite valuable houses were, were torn down. Nonetheless, uh, by, by, uh, B F J.'s analysis, there were a potential of four properties that would be legally compliant if subdivided. So, uh, they've talked about several options. Here you see the drawing of the Girl Scout Property with a potential, uh, subdivitable, uh, development. Um, and, uh, then identified parcels that could be subdivided for single-family development. I don't think that is so much the issue we confront right now. But anyway, the long story short, we had a conversation, uh, after she submitted this, uh, and the sense of this, uh, was that in order to address the issue that Bernie and others have presented, uh, it would be possible to establish in our zoning code the requirement that, uh, two-family homes in the R2A district have frontage on Bedford Road. So, what that would mean is we don't have to change the zoning map if we enacted such a requirement. Uh, it would simply create a circumstance, as would be the case on, on, uh, the Clark Street properties, where the second property in would remain in the R2A zone, uh, but would not be able to achieve the requirement of having frontage on Bedford Road. Uh, so it doesn't require changing the zoning map. Uh, it doesn't require throwing a whole bunch of other properties into non-compliance because of that, but I think it would achieve the goal that Bernie and others have sought. Uh, and it would do it, I think, with relatively little impact since, per the analysis B F J. presented, there are only a very small number of properties, uh, potentially at risk for this problem. Uh, and obviously, the Girl Scout Property is one of them. So, Bernie, did you want to comment in any way on that? You can talk if you wish. All right. Uh, don't know if he's gonna watch or whether he's muted. Did anybody else have a view on this? Dead silence.
I mean, well, you, you presented some new information there, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
With Clark Street. So, that, that was new.
Absorbing.
Yeah. Although, the, the situation at Clark Street, where the current owner has agreed, uh, at least verbally and, and, uh, pretty clearly, that he will make certain that the second parcel in is, is sold with the deed requirement in perpetuity to be single-family, that addresses that problem. But that problem, to the extent that you perceive it to be a problem, would be also addressed by, by this proposed change, which is to say, at least in the R2A zone, the, the, the clear intent, as Bernie has described and as you can see in the outline of the R2A zone, which follows the property lines all along Bedford Road, would mean that that second parcel would not need that deed, deed adesment, uh, because it would, that deed restriction, I mean, that, because it would be unable to achieve the requirement that there be frontage on Bedford Road. Clearly, you'd have to have some minimum width requirement so that somebody could, you know, create a, a plot that had a one-foot finger that reached out to Bedford Road, but.
But that would only be true if we changed the, changed the zoning prior to the sale of that lot with.
That, that would be true. Okay. But as I say, I, 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 I think, obviously, it ain't over till it's over, but I think we can trust the owner who has, who has both said he will do that and has said that we can publicly say so. So, um, I, I think it unlikely that there is a risk attached to that. By the same token, to my knowledge, that's not sold yet. So.
So, the, I mean, since I was a- absent for the original meeting, the concern that is raised is about the density of having two-family homes?
Right. So, you can, you know, Bernie also sent a memo that we all got, uh, a few weeks back.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, the, the, the core argument there, uh, is, is that, uh, the density and activity associated with, uh, two-family, uh, houses inserted into a neighborhood that's otherwise single-family would be problematic. That matter is obviously, you know, not, uh, viewed the same way by everybody.
Yeah.
But I will say that the one piece of this that seems pretty clear is that, uh, there are only four parcels in total where, where this is, is a possibility at all. Um, and, uh, the one of them has already been attended to, as, as mentioned, uh, the Baker Property. Uh, two of them seem highly, highly, highly unlikely, uh, ever to be subdivided in that way because you'd have to knock down an old and very valuable house. Um, so really, what it adds up to is that the issue exists at the Girl Scout Building. What we don't know at the moment is what may happen at the Girl Scout Building. As you know, it was offered for sale. Uh, it was in contract to a developer who was intending to build single-family homes. That developer decided not to carry through with the deal. I don't know all of the details, other than the conversation I had with him suggested that he may have been, uh, over-optimistic about the number of single-family lots that were gonna be possible on that property. I don't know if that was in the end the result, but anyway, it's back on the market. Uh, and I can report that we've had in- interest expressed by various entities, including some not-for-profits, that might potentially fulfill the requirements of the special-use permit based on our zoning code, but all of that is unknown. So, we don't know what will happen there. Uh, but if we were simply to add the requirement that the R2A zone, uh, requires frontage of a minimum width to be determined on Bedford Road, that would address, uh, what some perceive as a risk on the Girl Scout Building. And, uh, I, I think it's a pretty straightforward solution that is, uh, really relatively un-impactful anywhere else.
That's how it looks to me as well. And there, there aren't, the other two don't have any side street frontage anywhere.
Correct. Right. So, look, there's obviously gonna be a whole lot of discussion and has been in the past year and certainly in the coming years about accessory dwelling units, about multifamily housing, about, uh, changes in local zoning to increase, uh, the availability of both of those things, including, as has been suggested in Albany, already overriding local zoning at the state level to require those things. Um, I think our community deserves quite a bit of credit for having, uh, created and, and being in the process now of creating quite a bit of multifamily housing. We're certainly not a community that has, uh, sort of put up a fence around it and said, "We only want single-family homes." To the contrary, the, the, the increase in the number of housing units in Pleasantville, not just now, but in, in, in really years past, with, uh, the creation of, of apartment projects like, uh, Ledge Rock, like the, uh, apartments on Broadway and Pleasantville Gardens on Manville, uh, have all created an environment where we have a lot of multifamily housing. The new work that's going on downtown is creating more of it. Uh, and obviously, it's a, a fragile business and one that is hard to predict since we don't control the market, uh, to, to, uh, both protect and maintain stable neighborhoods that in many cases exist almost unchanged for the last 75 or more years, but at the same time accommodate change in the world. So, um, I don't think this modest change in our R2A zoning, uh, is a, uh, would be an indication that, uh, we're, uh, contrarians about multifamily housing, uh, but I do think it would address the concerns that we've heard from lots of neighbors. And I think it would also reduce modestly, uh, our exposure to problematic development at the Girl Scout Building. So.
Well, that seems good, the latter.
That would be good.
Yeah.
So. Paul, you have any thoughts on that? Seem okay?
Yeah. I think that, that, it kind of, um, kind of creates, like we said.
Yeah.
A good, good precedent, kind of moving forward on it, where we're not changing the whole thing and it just, kind of seems to work out in that way. Good, it was a good, I think, good solution to it.
All right. So, Bernie, are you there? If you want to talk, feel free to unmute. Um, the other piece of this, and you can go back to the, the memo and see that, is that Susan has identified, and I think is, is something that, that we've noticed at various points in the past, that the, uh, text of the historic overlay district, uh, which was created back i- in, in the mid-to-later eighties in response to the loss of a big Victorian house and the creation of the office building at 427 Bedford Road, uh, uh, is kind of a statement of faith. Uh, it's a little bit loosey-goosey.
Loosey-goosey, yeah.
And, uh, Susan has suggested that it would make sense to undertake, um, as a separate matter from this zoning change I just mentioned, um, a more thorough review of that, uh, and, and to suggest, uh, some strengthened language in that, in that code, that would give the A R B. and Planning Commission, both functioning, uh, uh, the same group functioning as both boards, would give them both, uh, clearer tools to use to address applications that come before them and also, uh, clearer, clearer regulations to enforce. Again, nobody's talking about some extraordinarily decronian, decronian, um, you know, colonial Williamsburg kind of a rule with a, a list of paint colors.
Paint colors.
Uh, but by the same token, uh, we are the fortunate beneficiaries of a street that, to a large extent, not entirely, but to a large extent, uh, looks, uh, very much the way it looked 100 years ago. And, uh, that's a significant piece of the, of the historic character of the community, the, the, uh, charm of the community and, and its history. So, I would be in favor of engaging, uh, B F J. to do that review. Susan said she could give us a proposal. Obviously, there's an additional fee attached to that. But let's get a look at what that might cost and what steps she might take.
Mm-hmm. Sounds like a good idea.
All right. So, can I take from the action there that, uh, pending any further comment that might come in the coming days, we should ask B F J. to put together the steps required to enact this change in the R2A zone, adding the requirement that, uh, any property include, uh, any property in the R2A zone has to have frontage on Bedford Road of some minimum width, and she should suggest to us what she thinks that should be, uh, in order to qualify for two-family zoning. So, just to be clear, what that would mean is there would be the potential, as there is now on, would then be on the second lot in on the Baker Property on Clark Street, to have properties in the R2A two-family zoning, zone that are only developable a single-family because they, they don't meet that requirement. We asked, but it's, it's clear from both planning and legal that you can't have contingent zoning that says the underlying zoning changes automatically if you subdivide and no longer have, uh, Bedford Road frontage. So, would require a map change every time that happened. So, this seems like a pretty straightforward, clean route. In the hypothetical that the, uh, Girl Scout Building were to be purchased by someone who intends to use it for a permitted use with no, no changes, it would be a moot point, but, but in place nonetheless. All right?
Okay.
Um, okay.
Seventy Memorial Plaza.
Seventy Memorial. Eric, you want to describe that?
Oh, yeah. Um, hold on. So, we have three existing license agreements that are set to expire. Uh, one over, uh, the parking spaces on Memorial Plaza, uh, one over a portion of the lane lot, and one over a portion of Cooley Street, both of which are being used for staging areas. Um, they're requesting, month to month, not to exceed six months. Uh, they pay every month for the parking that they, uh, are using. The, the parking spaces here on Memorial Plaza, they are, um, probably within the next month or so going to be able to provide back to us.
And then we can enact the angled parking.
Correct. Correct. So, um, uh, that we still have to come to terms on, in terms of whether to just make it a straight sidewalk or one with bump outs. Um, uh, but that is the request that they have right now. So, it would be not to exceed six months, but they'd be agreeable to month to month over that, that period of time.
The building looks like it's moving along pretty quickly. Is there any more accurate estimate about when it's likely to be done?
Um, not, not that I've received.
I mean, I met with them a few weeks ago, uh, and, and they, uh, said they were targeting to be done the end of the year. I have to say, that seems aggressive, but as you rightly point out, they're moving fast.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and it's, it's really, um, as, as you can see with your own two eyes, it's a level of quality that's impressive. So.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, I'm fine with that extension.
Okay. And then we, maybe for the next work session, revisit the, uh, the sidewalk area.
Yeah. Good idea.
Right. So, so, and, and, and there, uh, Vito is, is interested in providing planters that would be irrigated from within the building, which would be.
Interesting.
Great.
Yeah.
So, uh, he, his landscape architect is gonna come back with a proposal for that, right?
Right.
That sounds good.
Yeah. All right. Anything else on that before we go back to executive session?
That's it.
All right. We're, we're, uh, oh, Bernie had audio issues. Uh, did you want to say something, Bernie? Are you able to?
Maybe not.
All right. Well, I'll give him a buzz tomorrow just to.
Yeah. Good idea.
Just to make sure. All right. I'm gonna end the Zoom.
Free.
Uh, and then head to the back. Before I do that, I'm going to respond to Owl's request to update itself.